And there's Jeff. All right, great. It's like we're all here.
Repeating thing.
All right, everybody. It's seven o'clock. I think we have a full contingent of city council. I'll call to order this evening's February 8th, regular meeting of the Wabashua City Council and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Well, I hope everybody's doing okay. I have the crud waiting for a COVID test tomorrow. Just kind of just enough energy to get us through the night, I think. So we'll begin. Do we have a guest speaker slated? I'm not seeing anybody. All right. Any public comment? If you would care to address council for a couple of minutes, we would welcome that. If you've never done it before on Zoom, you just unmute yourself by clicking the little microphone, which is on the lower left of your screen. It does disappear. So if you don't see it, go down to your lower screen and hover and it'll come up. Unmute yourself and feel free to just state your name and your residence for the record and share anything you'd like to with council.
My name is Sharon Burke. I live in Milligan Avenue. And I just wanted to remind the community that on the last Saturday in February, which is the 26th, we have our grumpy plunge. This is a fundraiser for Great River Homes for those that have developmental disabilities who might otherwise have to live in an institution. They're able to live in housing and also rotary projects, most of which are right here in the community. If you'd like to pledge, plenge, pledge, let's try this again, plunge or pledge. You can go to the Wabashua Chamber of Commerce site and there'll be some dropdown menus. Again, that's the Wabashua Chamber of Commerce. And if you haven't had an opportunity to sponsor anyone, feel free to select Sharon Burke from the drop down menu. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. I'm sure there are some veteran plungers in this group, but probably none more esteemed than Sharon herself. So if you haven't picked somebody to pledge, it's always a wonderful event and it should be a lot of fun and hopefully we'll get great weather for it. Thank you, Sharon. Any other public comment? I'm flipping through to see that I'm not ignoring anybody here. Don't see anybody else. Here, I'm getting a little bit of feedback. I want to mute. They've got background noise. All right. Hearing no further public comment. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda by staff or members of council?
Mayor, can we pull eight two and make it 10 eight, please? I just have a few changes I need to make.
Yes, indeed. So eight, two from the consent agenda is the approval of the Wabashua ambulance employee policy.
10 eight.
Oh, 10 eight, excuse me. Make it 10 eight. Yes, under general business. Please scold me, Tim, if I miss, if I get ahead of myself there. Any further changes or additions? We have a big consent agenda, but I think the packet was very informative and straightforward.
I think there was an error in the city council minutes. I think there was, I don't know if we can change it here or do we got to take it out separately? It was just, it said ambulance director Darren Shealy, and I don't think he's the ambulance director. And I think he gave an update on the fire departments, the ambulance.
Amend the consent agenda to include the change to those minutes. Thanks, Jeff. Anything further? Okay, with that, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with item eight two removed and correction to the January minutes recognized? Thank you. And was that Dean?
Yes.
Thanks, Dean, and second by Tim?
Sorry.
It was Brian. Sorry. Looking at my agenda, not at your faces. Okay, first by Dean, second by Brian, and we'll take a roll vote.
Or, yes.
Moyer?
Yes. Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Sella?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Okay, with that, thank you very much to the firefighters for inviting members of council to the meeting and dance. It was wonderful, great attendance, and I hope it was a really fun night for everybody involved. It was fun for me to attend. I know Carolyn was able to be there and several members of council. The Chamber of Commerce had their annual meeting at the front porch and there too. Jeff came from council. Tyler's on the board. Thank you, Tyler, for that board service. Carolyn was there. I was there as a regular chamber member. And so they appraised us of the coming year's events, which is looking more normal than it did last year. So they're on a road to recovery in terms of their activities. Just a couple of updates. Senator Klobuchar is convening four mayors, and I'm going to tell you who they are in just a second here, tomorrow afternoon to talk about priorities in our communities. That will probably be covered by the local press, probably even the Post Bulletin. They've all had received press releases. So it's Mike Paulinger from La Crescent, Jason Restman from Lanesboro, Scott Sherman from Winona and me. So we'll be appraising the senator and her staff of our priorities, namely our bonding application, knowing that they'll be probably be funding shortages on that project and really urging for the infrastructure dollars that have been promised through the Department of Transportation. Thanks, Sharon, for highlighting the Grumpil Men Festival. That's going to occur before we meet again. And I don't have really any other updates. I will share that every month that we have to make the decision about whether to have in-person meetings, I struggle with it. We certainly don't have a lot of good news. It's starting to look better. We have better trends in our community, but we're still on high transmission. I know a lot of people have, you know, work restrictions that already are keeping them home or probably in a limited capacity. And nobody likes Zoom and I want to be back in person as soon as we possibly can. The two issues, the two provisions of the statute that allow members to participate remotely as deemed necessary by me or our city administrator or attorney are that we are in a pandemic and that statute existed before the pandemic, which I thought was interesting. It's that same level of emergency that could occur if we had a devastating flood and people couldn't convene in a public, in our typical public meeting space. So that is a very easy justification to make. Many cities are still have been and continue to be in remote meetings. I did notice some are coming into a hybrid meeting model, which I'll certainly give consideration to in the future. The other reason that somebody can participate remotely, you might remember, is because they have been recommended personally that their medical health would be jeopardized by being in a public meeting. So that's where, you know, one of us might have cancer and our doctor says, you know, you really shouldn't go out in public and we would have that privilege to be remote, even if the body was convening in person. And the third is for active military service, the same reason. That second opportunity where you either by medical justification or by military service justification would serve in your capacity remotely would mean that you'd need to be in a publicly noticed public location. So a library, for instance, if you were serving the military or someplace where members of the public can see your, your location noticed. So giving consideration for everybody's well-being, you know, people have different levels of health concerns across, you know, in our council as well as in our staff. It's just felt most prudent to me to continue to state the case for this under the pandemic. One of my justifications is that if somebody uses that medical exemption, they have three chances in a year to do that. So if someone's in frail health or has greater than normal concerns about contracting COVID in their duties as a member of council or a staff, they can only use that justification three times. And so given that we are still in really a high, this unusual Omicron curve, which probably means that many more of us will have natural immunity, you know, in the shorter term, I got my eyes on that for sure. But up until now, that just, it hasn't seemed prudent to drag everybody back into council chambers. We haven't made any improvements to our council chambers and we don't really have the space to distance ourselves or members of the public. So I was looking up hybrid opportunities. We can do hybrid. We have the technology for it. You probably remember when we went back to in-person meetings in the summer, we used the owl and that little round speaker kind of rotates and looks at whoever's talking. It's awkward. It works. I don't know how much it precludes participation of the individuals who are not in the room. I've found it as a project manager to be a challenging technology to manage, but it certainly is possible. We have that. And I really do welcome any contact you want to make with me about this. You know, what we hope is that we're going to start to see some of our case numbers, you know, diminish to the point that we, you know, are not in significant transmission in our community in lots of respects can go back to normal, including lots of different settings that have had restrictions on them. But it wasn't February. It wasn't, didn't appear to be happening by February. That's all I'll say about that. And any other Wabashua good news or comments from members of council? Otherwise, I'll start with the committee reports. If anybody wants to chime in with news or an announcement, feel free. All right, committee reports. Top of the grid for me is John. Do you want to share with us the achievements of the Port Authority? There's been a lot of activity.
Yeah, there has. Yeah, the Port Authority had two meetings since our last city council meeting, the first being January 18th, our regular meeting, and then we had a special meeting February 1st. February 1st meeting was a special meeting and it was in respect to the community block grant loans for COVID-19 HVAC units that we just approved in the and we didn't approve it yet. Anyway, so it's in our consent agenda. A lot of work was spent on that. Great participation, great interest in it in our community. Caroline and Kathy from CETA. Tyler have all spent a great deal of time kind of correlating that and scoring them to a point where we can, we can certainly give out quite a bit of money with respect to this. It was pretty, it was, it was nice to see the amount of interest in it. So that was that part. The January 18th meeting, our regular meeting, we had several items of which one of those was reviewing that initial, initial proposals for the HVAC grant requests. We also talked about the emergency loan program. We had a COVID-19 emergency loan program that we set up almost immediately when, when most of our facility restaurants and that had to close or do limited service. And Tyler's been tracking that and everyone's on track. That's some, the borrowed money from us, many have paid in full. So that's been going great. In our revolving loan fund program, this is money that we were able to capture from USDA from a previous loan that we ran some years ago. So it becomes part of our program as time progressed. And there was an application through that. The Hills Hardware applied and we were able to grant him a gap loan for him to move forward with reacquisition of that property. Also, the director, director's report from CETA, there was discussion about the Minnesota Housing Partnership. It's another group that we're getting involved with. It's going to be rather a broad group of people, and I think it's going to really help the community tap resources that maybe we didn't realize we could, we could capture for the community. And then also there was kind of a recap with respect to a meeting for development for childcare. And Mayor, I know you're heavily involved with that con from our, the Port Authority is as well. And so that will continue. We've kind of gotten that going again and that'll continue to hopefully get, get some traction. It's a big item to get your arms around and, and I appreciate those who are more involved in it than I am. And lastly, we did touch basis real quickly on the, the port, the dredge material project, the 217D agreement. That is slowly making its way through the process. Currently, it's all an internal review at the Army Corps, although we have been working with our attorneys submitting additional items that we'd like to include in the 217 agreement, which is that mechanism for us to have a relationship with the Army Corps. Just as a reminder, this is, this whole port facility project is the alternative to having about 70 or 80 trucks run through our town on a daily basis in the summer when they're moving product, when they're moving dredge material. So I don't, it's been a long time coming and it's a slow process. We often need to be reminded of where we're at. It's so slow, but it continues to move forward. And so that's nice. I appreciate everyone's investment in that. I think that's it.
Right. And I'm really sorry. I tried to get on the special meeting call where the HVAC grant awards were allocated. But I'm, I was curious whether the sentiment was, it sounded like from the capture, the summary that was captured in the agenda packet, that the most, the most awards could be given to the most, could be given if there was some level of investment by the applicant. So a little, little more than 10% of match led to, you know, $100,000 worth of awards. Is that about right?
Yeah, yeah, we actually were able to provide two additional loans by going this route. And again, we, because of this USDA funding that we have kind of at our disposal, it's restricted in what we can do with it. And so one of the things that we can do with it is give these zero interest loans for situations just like this. We're not able to give it just as maybe a gap loan for someone wanting to acquire additional property for their business or something. But this is something that we can use it for. So it works out. It works out really well. And I think that as we move forward, I think the vast majority of these applicants will have great success with it. The, the process was very burdensome on the applicants as well as on staff. So this is a, it's a big step for the whole community and all of these different businesses. So well done with that.
Any questions for John? All right, Tim. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I will mention too, that the ambulance task force met at least a couple of times during that time period. And there's several items in the agenda and Caroline has a lengthy, nice report with respect to that. So I'll leave that to her.
Sounds good. Yeah, and I'll probably leave it to Caroline to comment on the court too. We are just where you said. It's, it's, it's step by step. We had, we did have a meeting with them where we addressed in verbal discussion, some of the changes that were suggested by the city. And that was an effort to not have a draft going, volleying back and forth unnecessarily. So. All right. And then I see, Tim, you guys are just done with planning this evening. I know.
Yeah, so we, Mayor, we met today to discuss really the only idea we had is the, we approved an IUP for the Rochester Sand asphalt plant out by Dairy Queen, very similar to what they had in 2019 when they were doing real construction. So we just approved that with a few conditions. And one of those will be coming probably to city council in the near future. So otherwise, that was about it.
Jeff, do you want to take streets or certainly lean on Tony, who's probably got notes prepared? Streets met last week. Losing track of the days.
Yes, I got the crud too, Mayor, so I'm right there with you.
Yeah.
Stick out sick today and probably tomorrow too. We talked about the NEC traffic routing, change of that Lawrence Boulevard direction here a little bit. So we got some other questions that I got to pass on to Brian and get some answers for our next meeting. Nothing too major. Farmer's Market is going to be moving from Allegheny, right next to Hills Hardware, and they're going to be using half of the parking lot by the food shelves. So it was kind of a, I kind of want to get the two together and that seems to be a, a good spot. So we're going to try that. And then we had a couple of commissioners that extended their time on the street commission and we just wanted to thank Jay Druce and Jim Mathias for, for doing that. We got a full contingency group on there. So we're good. And then last but not least, Dylan Harder has 10 years in with the city. So we just wanted to recognize that something that we're doing staff that's kind of, you see him, give him a thank you or whatever, and he's got 10 years on. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Tony. Yeah, congratulations to Dylan. That's great. Jeff, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Brian, utilities?
Hi, utilities met yesterday, mostly just run-of-the-mill approvals. Like you mentioned last meeting, though, we did workshop the EV charger issue in town. The room, as far as utilities handling spearheading an EV charger was less than enthusiastic. A lot to do with not wanting to spend city funds on a project like that. In the fact that technology is moving so quickly. And the articles that you and I were cycling back and forth said, you know, only 1% of vehicles on the road are electric at this point. And I kind of likened it to a solar panel. We were told in, in a matter of years, they're going to come up with technology that's so much better. And to invest our time and effort into getting a charging station right now, I don't think anyone felt it was a good project to do just in the immediate sense anyway. I looked at, you know, in those articles, some of the other cities like Plymouth, the Chamber of Commerce actually bought theirs and with some help of local businesses and then Lake City, they're, they have an electric utility department that, that spearheaded theirs at Fiesta Foods. So the, the best resource I found was MinDOT. They do have a grant program that they, they did to help pay for EV charging stations. And they've already gone through their first cycle and made the awards and they haven't opened their second one up yet and they won't until fall of 2022. So we would want to wait for that anyway to try to do anything. It, it just cites that, you know, they're awarding grants from 25 grand to 500 grand, I guess, depending on how many stations you want to put in. And they require 20% minimum local match. So the city would be on the hook for money, whether it's raised or donated in some way, shape or form. But I'm kind of thinking if we could get a grant, I don't think it would be difficult to raise the other 20%, whether privately or some way. So there might be a way to do it without the city having to spend a dime. And then just lastly, what I found is there's three levels of chargers. Level three, the, the best one is the only one we'd be interested in. The others would take hours and hours and hours to charge vehicles. It just, it just wouldn't work for a public utility. And those can run anywhere from $12,000 to $35,000. So I guess we just keep our eyes on it. And I check back on that website every now and again. So eventually MinDOT's going to open that grant fund again. And if we just pay attention, we can address it when that comes out. That's all.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, I had reached out to Ross Lexwell at Excel and that corroborates what you're saying. And he, his comment was, it's a rapidly changing and evolving area of our business, even hard for me to keep up on, up to date on all of it. And he pointed out, you know, there's kind of three dimensions of public related EV charging. One is public fast charge. So what you recommended, that level three, two would be fleet vehicle electrification. So you'll see some cities are moving to electrify their fleets. And then three, multifamily buildings. He did, he did reference something called EV assessment and infrastructure interest forums, which is a form basically for Excel Energy. The reason I reached out to him is I noticed when we were on vacation in Bayfield County, I guess between like Washburn and Ashland, Wisconsin, they were in, in cooperation with charging their bus vehicles that go back and forth between the two cities. They had a public fast charge. And that was an Excel, or at least partially Excel funded project. So I think it's good for us to be talking about it. Thanks for putting on the utilities agenda. There, there's likely to be infrastructure money. So we might want to be positioned at least to apply for that. And I think it's come up too, in some of the materials that Brian has prepared for us today, you know, the, the planning element of it. Where would it make sense to be to have the greatest public good? So I think even those, those types of conversations staying top of mind will be to our benefit if we end up applying for any funds. Thanks, Brian. Dean and Tony Parks updates? Did you guys meet?
We did not.
Okay. Very good. And then I think that is everybody. Any reports? I think I saw Darren on any fire updates you'd like for us to have, Darren? Okay, we've got agenda items related to fire and police. Joe, anything else besides what's slated for the agenda?
I don't know that. I'll be sending out some quarterly updates to the council here within the next week. So.
Great. All right. Okay, so with that, I made, you know, I think I got a little ahead of myself here. I'm going to just take a step back and make sure that we really, not just the changes to the consent agenda are approved, but that we actually have approval of the items on our consent agenda. As John mentioned, the approval of the CDBG COVID-19 HVAC grants, as was described, the approval of the police department monitors and computers for their vehicles, approval of Wabashua ambulance employee policy changes has been struck. Boring commission appointments. Thank you very much to Jenny Palman, Julie Surson and, and John Rivers, all for applying to the Heritage Preservation Commission. That's great. Seeing the interest in that commission. The 2022, 2023 fire contracts for the townships, the revised ambulance commission duties and membership, the February warrants, the city council meeting minutes that were corrected to not list Darren as our ambulance director. He was making a fire update. The liquor licenses, the approval of lighting upgrades for the two fire vehicles and approval of the Port Authority strategic plan. Do we have a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda?
I'll move. Tim?
Thank you, Tim.
Second, Friedmeyer.
Thank you. We have a motion from Tim. We have a second from John. We'll take any further discussion. Otherwise, we'll have a roll vote. Okay, hearing them? Can't see if maybe Tyler's muted. Walrick?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Sella?
Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Duran? Yes, thanks. Sorry to do a little bit of a cha-cha there. I just want to make sure we're really approving what we think we're approving. All right. And, and we have our administrators update.
Okay, I have attached something to the agenda, but I'm just going to read through it and feel free to look at the agenda. First of all, we are celebrating Lisa Springer's two-year work anniversary. She is our office manager. I've gotten to know Lisa since April and she is amazing and her nickname is Mary Poppins, as she is guaranteed to have whatever one might need. Even more in her short time here, she's quickly proven herself invaluable. She's always willing to rise to the challenge and pitch in anything from website design to front desk reception to pool management and support and more. And then we're celebrating Wendy Bush's 10-year anniversary. She started out as a part-time planning assistant and now has two jobs, city clerk and planning assistant. Wendy's wealth of knowledge and friendly welcoming demeanor makes Wabashua a great place to work. She also wears many hats with ease from handling employees with COVID to HR benefits to historic preservation to zoning decisions. And she has stepped up many occasions to provide her leadership and expertise. So just wanted to thank both of them. Lisa, I don't know if you can turn on your camera, but she's here and Wendy's there. And I just love working with both of them and we're so fortunate to, to have them on staff. So. And we're going to just start celebrating work anniversaries. And then we're going to just do everyone's this year and then next year we'll go to major work anniversaries. So. In terms of, I just tried to organize my administrators' report in terms of our key goals and progress. So one of those is securing financing for the Highway 60 reroute project and the athletic field, moving the athletic field. And so Bolton and Mank and Tony Johnson are going to be applying for a $300,000 grant to fund the athletic field through the, through the DNR. And we have authorized some expenditures for Bolton and Mank to write the grant. But Tony honestly drafted that thing in one day. But Tony honestly drafted that thing in one day, so there's not a whole lot of work left. And we're excited to pitch this exciting project. And then Tony is also confirming with our donor a plan for the athletic field for one tennis court and two pickleball courts. In terms of the barge terminal, we are still finalizing legal agreements. Mike Flaherty, our eternity, is drafting agreements to operationalize this project. And we will be waiting this year on results of if we got funding to fund the project. There's lots on the agenda with regards to the ambulance service, but the ambulance task force did a great job discussing a really tough issue and providing recommendations. On this administrator's report, I also have a report on the Eagle Center, and that project is moving forward. They've decided to expand the the amphitheater to be able to seat more people. The demolition has been completed on the Eagle Center. And then on the other end, the Eagle Center is waiting for us to be able to reimburse the costs that they've incurred so far. We finally received approval from MMB. I need to review a grant agreement with the state, and we're getting signatures. And I think this week I learned that, from talking to colleagues, the HVAC replacement grant will be somewhat a lot of administration. And so our first step that I need to communicate with all the grantees is the first step is actually a site visit by staff with everybody to to get standardized forms and bids ready to go. So I'll be, and hopefully with Tyler and Seda, actually visiting a lot of businesses in Wabashaw, which will be fun. And we've been accepted into the Minnesota Housing Institute, which means that Wabashaw will have what we're calling a housing cohort. So it's local people dedicated to think about how do we expand housing in Wabashaw, and will receive technical assistance. And just finally, of interest, a small group met to discuss short-term rentals. And staff will be initiating phone calls to delinquent lodging taxpayers. And the list of the delinquent lodging pass taxpayers is in this spreadsheet, and we are going to be trying to get people to pay. But it was actually quite complicated. Actually, this is another initiative. At least the Springer had to do extensive research to figure out what are all the short-term rentals in Wabashaw. She did a great job. She was doing satellite images just to try to figure this out. And so depending on the level of compliance we get with just the phone calls, then staff will be exploring possibly a mandatory registration of all short-term rentals. That's it.
Thank you so much, Caroline. Congrats to everybody celebrating an anniversary. We like we like it so much when people stick around, especially when they're fantastic. And thanks for that work. I know I was a part of that group that sat down about short-term rentals. Jeff was there with members of the business community. And it's it's a it's a trickier thing than probably one would would imagine, but it's it speaks to the issue of larger cities with a significant more number of these types of establishments still not solving this problem. So I appreciate the kind of experimental customer service work that's being done by city staff. Thank you. My agenda just keeps getting sort of stuck on me here. All right, very good. And as I, as you may have noted in the Eagle Center update, they acknowledged the the shifting of the dockage to accommodate the pump maintenance for the fountain. I think that I don't know if that came up in last month's city council meeting or last month's port authority meeting, but I know it was a concern and appears to have been addressed. So now we do not have a public hearing this evening, but under general business, we have our first item is to determine the next steps for the sale of 137 Pembroke Avenue. We have a nice staff report. I think everybody was pretty clear on where this was at last meeting. Essentially, an initial appraisal valued the property at between $10,000 and $15,000. That is not what the buyers had intended to make an offer for. The county assessed value is significantly lower than that at 3,000, so two two professional opinions were sought, both concurring that a $7,500 value would be reasonable. And staff recommends that we offer the building for sale to the adjacent property owners for that that estimated $7,500. And if that is rejected, then we would list the building for sale on the MLS for 15,000 for six months to see if there are, in fact, willing buyers to construct the structure on the lot, which would add tax base for the city. And there's a site plan and a comparative market value report included in our packet, as well as SBJ's photo describing what they would like to utilize the property for. Do we have a motion on this item?
Walrick, go make a motion.
And is your motion to make that offer as recommended by staff, Tim?
Ah, that would be correct.
We have a motion by, we have a second by Brian. Any further discussion? I know we have Speedlinks here with us tonight. Thanks for being here. I'm looking for nods or people trying to say something. All right, seeing no further discussion, we can take a roll vote. Moyer?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Sulla?
Yes.
Friedmeier?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yeah.
Walrick?
Ah, yes.
Durand? Yes. Great, all right. Thank you. I see Shelley's still signed in. If you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we understand. It's it's a busy night for everybody, but we appreciate you being here. Thanks so much, and you're sure welcome to stay too.
So we are here. So where do we go from now? Where do we go now?
Would you like?
Do we follow up with Caroline?
Yeah, Caroline, would you like city staff to reach out, or would you like Speedlinks to reach out with that in in response to that that valuation?
Yeah, we've been talking, so, yep, we can we can talk, and you're also an HVAC grant recipient, so I need to visit your building anyway. So we can cover both both things at once, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, our second item of general business is to discuss the proposed ICS proposal and discuss any questions that we may have. As you remember, we had a nice presentation by ICS staff, but we were right up against our council meeting. So in the workshop, we we did not have ample time for questions. So I think there was the opportunity to follow up with questions in the interim. We have before us an attached agreement for facility assessment services, which is rather holistic. It outlines facility condition baseline, cloud-based reporting software, and additional two years of annual plan review. And those services total $9,000, $6,000 of which is due at signing, and $1,500 annually with each review. Does anyone have any questions for ICS staff? I know they've joined us. I see Karen is with us. Any questions? Mike's here. Craig, Craig, did you have a question?
I have a question. So I was wondering about the proprietary software. So thinking that we have a lot of buildings, and by the time we get around to fixing them, good amount of time is going to go by. Will we still be able to use that proprietary software, say, five to 10 years from now? Are we going to have to be paying 1,500 a year to continue to be a subscriber?
Tony, did you want me to answer that? I I probably should. Yeah, great question. I certainly can answer that. So first thing, all of the data that we end up putting into the software is your data. So even if we were to just continue providing services with our software moving forward, like at some point, all the data that we have in whatever report format your staff determines is most appropriate would still remain with you. The cost to maintain and update the software, the $1,500 per year is not just the software cost. That's the cost for us to come in and actually update it for you. So the cost would actually go down pretty significantly if you were to maintain a subscription service. And so the reason that we're starting with three years is because, generally speaking, when we come into a new city, we have a lot more data collection and a lot more work to do, of course, on the front end to get everything updated. And then if if, you know, Tony and his staff were to say, you know, hey, we would just want to update this on our own, we would have to reduce that price accordingly. The price hasn't been adjusted yet, frankly, because the square footages of your facilities. You have a number of facilities, but the square footages are relatively low. And because of that going down to just a software service, we actually don't have any clients that actually use it on their own yet. We have a very large number of school districts and cities and counties that utilize it, but they also utilize us to do it. So I can say confidently that the price would be significantly less if the staff were to take it on and do it on their own following those first three years. I don't know what that would be yet, to be perfectly honest with you, but it will not be that total amount if you were to take that task over on your own. Did I answer your question, sir?
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. And as far I do want to enhance or emphasize, as far as proprietary software, I think that kind of, I think our marketing folks might have gotten a little giddy with the fact that we paid and developed our own software. The reality is all the data that is in there is actually the city of Wabashaw. As we're just utilizing the actual process and the tool, and we're keeping that proprietary to our company for obvious business reasons, so.
Hey, Mike, can I just add in to that the reports, it's all Excel-based? So if you want to export any files, they're all Excel files at that point, so you can you can modify them in in the way that you need.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, you can see we have a staff recommendation that this study would be very helpful, and it would be a great start for the capital improvement budget for long-term future plan. Planning for maintenance replacements of buildings and the funding that goes along with it. So the city staff is recommending funding this plan under the CIP either in 2022 or to budget the funding for 2023. Do we have a motion related to either of those suggestions?
I'll make the motion to start budgeting for this item.
In 2023?
I I think 2023 might be better.
Okay, so the motion is to budget for this for this cost in 2023, and I think I heard a second. Okay, we have a first by Craig, a second by Dean. Any further discussion?
This is just a budget, not an approval, correct?
Well, yeah, let's get that clarified. Caroline, is that what you're asking for? Is that level the the level of approval would be to put it in the budget for 2023?
Yeah, and then I guess you know how budget season goes, but I think we would try to still would like feedback if if people feel like, no, this is something we'd like to prioritize. But yeah, it would not really be official till we approve the budget next December.
Okay. All right, with the motion and second, any further questions or discussion? Otherwise, we'll have a roll vote. Okay, Tyler, go ahead, or Jess? Sella?
Yes.
Walrick?
Yes.
Woodley?
Sure.
Moyer?
Yes.
Friedmeier?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Durand? Yes. Thank you, ICS. We appreciate your presentation last time. Sorry, we didn't didn't give you as much time as we maybe would have liked to. But we appreciate the questions you're able to receive for follow-up, and we look forward to this hopefully being part of a budgeted cost for 2023.
Sure thing. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too. All right, now this piece, I guess I should have maybe asked Caroline if she would like to present a little bit on this. We have, of course, the OWA Architecture documents, draft documents for the Fire Hall ambulance building study. Caroline, what would you like us to focus on? I know we've got a lot of, you know, documents before us. Put us, help us to focus.
Well, I think it might be helpful if Tony or Darren present on the background and the need for the projects and and what's in the plans. And then I have kind of brainstormed the financing part of it, so then I can do present at that point. And I just added that this afternoon, so probably most people haven't seen my financing portion of that.
Yeah, your financial analysis. If you if you didn't see that, it's the final link in the agenda item.
So, yeah, Darren or Tony, maybe Darren.
I know we've been given this background, but it's good for us to be reminded.
Well, I guess, you know, between me and Tony, I guess we can get this figured out. I guess you guys got copies of the proposal there, the the rough idea of what it's gonna, the expenditure this might cost. But you also got a copy today of the the building report, or the building structure-wise, and then a blueprint copy of what the the rough layout would be to the addition. So I guess with that, that's kind of where we're at with everything. After going, you know, set it back a couple times, getting some stuff worked out through there, I think we're we're sitting where we're at right now. And and I don't know, Tony, what do you got with that?
I just, I I think that there's some questions that need to be answered about the future of the ambulance and different things that I so there's a there's some stuff in there that needs to be figured out. I put some questions in there in the item summary. Because, you know, this thing could go like 10 different ways, so not quite sure how to proceed from here. We know both buildings need some renovation. But, you know, what what does the future look like? And any thoughts there from anyone?
Tony, I was wondering about your thoughts about future use for combined, excuse me, for city council and elections and others. I mean, what what kind of effort would that maybe offset? You know, I know I I've only been able to participate a little bit in some of the safety conversations that have happened about, you know, improvements to City Hall. I certainly wish we had a bigger space right now. Of course, I hope we don't have any kind of public health emergency that occurs in the next 10 to 15 years that makes a bigger meeting room nice. But what do you think about that additional benefit? I hadn't I hadn't thought about that piece of it. And is there is there some level of consensus amongst the current fire and ambulance about a combined building?
I guess as far as the elections go, this year we heard from the city hall staff who run that. We combined two wards down there at the fire hall, and we expanded, we moved the trucks out, we kind of, you know, spaced everything out. And it seemed to work, you know, really well. So the the thought was maybe in the future of maybe just having one central location. It'd be more of a streamlined process. You wouldn't have three setups. You'd have one setup. But that's something to discuss more with with city hall staff on that. And your other question was, oh, combining buildings. I Darren probably knows a little bit more. I'm I'm just a member of the fire department. I don't, I can't speak for the ambulance. I I'm not sure. That's why I I struggle with, you know, trying to figure out the longevity of the ambulance department. You know, are we going to keep it? Is it going to be here for the next 20 years? Or are we going to end up housing somebody else at some time in the future? You know, will they be able to use the same building if we combine them? There's just so many questions that I grasp with.
I think there's some, there's definitely some concern on that regardless of the way that a couple different prints were 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 put out to us, I guess. The way the way it was set out to begin with, and the way it was drawn, supposed to be drawn up to begin with, was, you know, you walk in the the central part of the building, and then you split right to the ambulance garage. You split, and you go left to the fire department, and that would keep these two departments separated no matter what happens down the road. And I think with some talking with with the architect and stuff, saying that there had to be a so-and-so fire break and et cetera in there, makes sense, whatever. But I still think you can't have a shared meeting room or a shared facility with the ambulance service. It it's two separate entities, and I think it needs to stay that way. Just just for if something would happen 10 years down the road where our ambulance service would partner up with a different group or go private or who knows what, and we need to be able to close that door and know that we don't have EMT personnel running around our fire station, and we don't have firefighters going inside the ambulance garage. And I think we need to make sure that we keep this two separate entities. So this is kind of new to me that this is also coming out saying that we got a shared meeting space or a shared facility. When really, it's not that. There was, there's going to be a doorway that goes between the two, but there's, it's it's still two separate entities. And I think it has to stay that way, just to to have the ambulance personnel lay out their training room the way they need it. And the fire department needs to do their their meeting room the way they need it, and I think we need to hold on to that. And so some of these prints that are coming back or some of these ideas. And so some of these prints that are coming back or some of these ideas, I don't know where they're coming from. So do we need to work some things out? Probably need to go back to table a little bit, get some finalized um, ideas here, but I think building wise, what you guys are seeing in front of you, that ain't gonna change a whole lot. I think regardless of while we do the meeting rooms and how we do um, the layout of the buildings itself, the structure is still what we're going after now. If we get the structure there and that cost figure thrown in there, I think moving some of that stuff around inside is, uh, is a small thing. We can, you know, that can happen once we get this, once this find, this next step goes through. I don't want to put a lot of time and effort into it if we're gonna be shot down and, and, uh, going back to drawing board, so that's kind of where I'm at. A lot of time and efforts already gone into this, into this with me, myself, just a lot of time. And I guess that's kind of where I'm at, I guess.
So you're thinking we have a project that's, you know, about 1.1 to 1.2 million, probably not a lot of cost savings related to shared facilities because you're like two tenants in this, in a, in a structure.
Yes, I, yes.
That makes sense, but you don't seem to have any reason to believe that we'd have any big additional costs beyond this estimate. So it's really an issue of what's in the plan and how things are arranged and how access, how controlled access works?
Yes, and I, I think that, that, you know, the waste later right now kind of, it, it leaves that open, you know, concept a little bit with, with, it comes around to elections and stuff. We're definitely gonna have a bigger facility for that. Um, bigger facility if we had to have, you know, more COVID shots or who knows what the public health uses it for and, um, you know, emergency management, that type of thing, so I, I think moving around from here on out, I don't, I don't, one thing I didn't want to do is I didn't want to see a quote go in for $900,000 and all of a sudden come in at 1.2 million. Um, that's one thing that I have proven over and over again as Fire Chief, I do not want them expenditures to be over what we're, we're trying to budget, I guess I should say. So if it's budgeted at this amount of money, we gotta work with that kind of money. And I think that's where I'm at.
Okay, and I'm sure Caroline wants to say something about that financing piece. Does anyone else have any questions about the, the actual plan documents or the, or the estimated project cost?
Yes, yes, we had a, was, uh, meeting yesterday to discuss this and got some feedback on it and a number of concerns from our staff regarding the whole ambulance renovations and how it's, none of it's gonna meet. I shouldn't say none of it. Some of it will meet our needs and there's still needs that are still lacking like training space and stuff. So I think there's a number of other items that we have concern with that I don't necessarily need to bring up today, but knowing that, you know, just because we're adding storage, but we need storage that's climate control, that changes the HVAC. You should fix the, where the vehicles are stored for the ambulance if we're remodeling it. Because we don't have the right clearance around all of our rigs. So there's a number of items that we need to to, to rectify before we really move forward. If the total estimate cost is 1.1 million or 1.2, you know, there's still a number of things that we want to either move around or add that easily would add another 500,000 to this. So it comes down to a city point of view of, do we want one building? I don't see why we can't. Um, or do we want two buildings, but we, if we're gonna renovate them, let's do them right the first time and move on. I mean, just because we need windows and, uh, door, new roof. I mean, we're spending a lot of money to start renovating some of the stuff and I want to do it right the first time, so we don't have to come back and then all of a sudden spend another 2 million on renovating the ambulance to accommodate some of our needs as well. And I, this is the first really I've ever been asked about it, so I, I'm not totally sure what we have been involved with from an ambulance and fire kind of togetherness and see what everybody needs and so on, so um, I just have a lot of concerns with the amount of money that's being spent on this and why wouldn't we want to look at trying to build a better building that accommodates everything from fire, potentially police? Do we really want them out of the CJC, you know, accommodate some of the city council stuff, you know, get room for some of our meetings and so on, so I think there's still a number of a discussion areas we really need to, to look at that.
So you think there is cost, additional cost possible, given the plans that are drawn before us?
Well, yeah, because the plan I have in front of us doesn't have even a training room for the ambulance.
Well, that's not true, Tim, and if, uh,
Well, that's not in our agenda, so.
There was plenty of, uh, talk about that and there, i- if you got a training room that holds 48 crew members, I mean, that's, that's twice the, I don't know what you're not, what you consider a training center or a training room, but, uh, we can hash all things all night, but I don't, this, a lot of the stuff's been looked into in the HVAC system in your ambulance bay. It was also talked about by me and Tony and two of them guys about getting proper ventilation out there. I get that, I understand that. Um, like I said, we consider hash all climate controlled rooms. Realistically, your medications can go in your, in your, in your rooms that are climate controlled already. It doesn't need to go all in the garage. And so there's things we can look at all across the board, but I think we gotta be right to the people. We gotta do, you know, I think sitting down and talking it out with, uh, some ambulance staff and Fire Department staff and Caroline and stuff, that's a good idea. Let's, let, you know, that's a good step forward and, and see what we got, but moving around the inside of the building structurally wise, I don't see a $500,000 increase in, uh, putting a couple of walls up and taking a couple down. So, um, I, yeah, I think we gotta do this right.
Did they give anybody an idea of what something like this would cost to build from scratch? Um, that's my only thought is, you know, when are we getting to the point where we just put a new building up and it's trying, uh, and trying to retro, instead of trying to retrofit everything here?
Understood it to be a draft of a new facility. Maybe I had that wrong.
Well, go ahead, Tim.
Um, I, I also, I kind of get around a little bit to other fire departments and, uh, talked to a few guys before this even was, um, moved ahead here and, um, like eight years ago, St. Charles put up their fire station, ambulance, police station at 1.2 million dollars. Um, that today's amount would be about 3.5 million. And I think if we can, I just don't know if I, that's even, I don't know, you're not.
Well, here's my thought on that. It, first of all, you know, I think we came to realize, you know, last month, um, maybe the, the strong possibility that we need to think about moving our, our police department back into a city-owned building. Um, their partnership out there is, is really wonderful and powerful, but it does put us in a bind to a degree from on occasion and, and it, it, it could be perilous if the political winds change too much out there. Um, so I, I would advocate to kind of rethink this. We've got really four emergency kind of, of departments. We've got emergency management, we've got fire, we've got EMS, we got police. Um, and at, at 1.2, 1.3, even at 1 million, that's a third of the way there for a new building that could possibly house all three. And I, I begin to wonder if, if, if we start to look at it that way, is that money better spent for the city going forward? Um, building something that's gonna accommodate all of our emergency services in a more contemporary planned out way that's safer. I mean, all those different things. And right now we've got responding personnel crossing the path of, of exiting emergency vehicles. Um, that's a, that's a, a, a big no-no in design of emergency response, you know, facilities. And, and I just, I wonder too, I mean, City Hall, we recognize City Hall is, is not to current standards for safety and for, um, uh, technology and everything else. So do we look at adding that as well? And if, at that point, then does our community have more? Would, would there be more community support that, that this is the right thing to do rather than spending a million dollars on the Fire Hall and the ambulance barn garage? And I, I don't know, I don't have those answers. I think, I think that that's where some of this discussion has to go. I don't disagree that both of the facilities, certainly the Fire Hall, needs help and, and something needs to be done, but I don't want, as with Tim, I don't want to spend, you know, a million, a million five and come up short and wish we would have done maybe the right thing um, to the, for the community. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
You know, and I don't have no, I have no problem with that, that type of thing. You're looking at a, a possibly new building that would house every, all the city needs for, um, the groups and stuff. I have no problem with that. It's just I don't want to be sitting here five years down the road dealing with a major issue of storage and, and, uh, the firehouse thing, we're still talking about it. So if it's, if it's something that we can look into and see if, what the possible cost with that would be, then I think we do it now before we get any further into the money we've already invested into this and the time and then we go look at a new Fire Hall or look at a new ambulance, look at a combination thing and then that don't work out and.
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I don't want to see this drag on and we've been talking about this, you know, Darren, you and I have been talking about this for years. So we should probably commit to trying to push forward with something and maybe that's just kind of a regroup of a more, um, combined group of people. And with, with, what are those common goals? What are our common goals with that? Give ourselves a deadline. So, and, and what's interesting too, and I'm kind of jumping over, but you know, down the road here, we're, we're talking about looking at a strategic planning plan for the whole city. So does that help us support a new facility for emergency services? I don't know, I mean, but it, it could very well. So if we can do this all together, we might come up with a, a far better result than rebuilding a building that was built in 1968 and another one was built in 1979. Know what I mean?
Yes, I, I agree with you and I, what I would, you know, what I could do, um, just because this stuff is something that I kind of enjoy doing anyway, but I can, I got a lot of connections out there, Fire Department wise, ambulance wise, um, Police Department wise, whatever. Um, I'd like to check into a few of these other facilities that went ahead and did this. Um, built combination stations and see what they, what kind of money they got into them. I know Stewartville and stuff just put one together, but, um, it's more of a Fire Hall than it is anything else, but they got their council chambers, I believe, in there and a few other things, but there's a few facilities I can look at just to see if something would be feasible to what we would need for our community and then just get a, you know, ask them what they're, what they have into it and then what police can report back to council and say, hey, we got, this is a ballpark figure and what we probably would need.
Yeah, and what did they like about it or what they don't like about it, you know?
And I think we're at that point where that's, that's not an, not a, that's a good question to bring up, and I think it's a good time to look into it a little bit before we, we spend a lot more time trying to do this and then also we decide to go the other way. So I think if it getting a ballpark figure of something that would work, it might take me a little while, but at least they come, at least you come back with something that might be close.
Yeah.
This report is, uh, lists a, a figure of $185 per square foot for new construction in this area, so that'd be a good ballpark for you to, you know, just get everybody's area, what they need and just get a rough estimate.
Um, I just wanted to add one thing. Um, Winona is actually looking at doing a combination fire, police and EMS right now. Um, I think they had a feasibility study done and, um, the study showed where the location would be. So they're a little farther down the road than we are. I can work with their staff and see what info I can get from them. And then I'll turn that over to staff, um, because they may have a lot of questions answered already that we're, we're asking.
The, the company that we were talking about here previous on the agenda to the ICS, they're working on a brand new one for um, CAS in Manorville because they weigh the odds of fix up the old or build new and, and CAS and just build a new, but I think it's, you know, twice the price of what we're looking at, but, uh, so we got some information there too we can get.
Yeah, I know, I think, yeah, New Prague was another one that, and they built it with that tip-up concrete. It, I, I, it's a huge building. I don't think they spent $3 million on it. And it's a combination building as well. And we have, that just got done with one, so.
What I'd like to see, I mean, what, what would be nice going forward to be, have a few guys on the committee or get a committee of five, six people together to sit down, you know, once every two or three weeks and, uh, go over the information that we need to look up or we can, we can break out and, and do certain things so we're not all backtracking against each other, um. Well, that's what I'd like to see. And then we have representation from, uh, you know, ambulance, fire, police and, uh, city with that. And I think that would, maybe that would help out with, yeah, the, the disagreement with ambulance and fire and whether the Police Department comes out there or comes back to the City Hall or, you know, what we need for council chambers, et cetera.
That sounds fine. I think there's, there seems to be a lot of will kind of in the same direction. I mean, you know, on the page, it looks like we have something we could approve tonight, but it, and it's just an issue of financing it, but it sounds to me like there's you're a little bit of discontent with the price tag, you know, from the fighter side of things. Is, is it worth that, you know, given what we're getting out of it and like ambulance has some needs on the page yet, so. Yeah, I would very much support that. So Caroline, do you want to, do you want to make a suggestion about the, discussing the finance pieces? Is it, is now the time or do we want to hear from this group?
No, it's not the time, not until we decide how much it's gonna cost and then we can look at what it's gonna cost, but just, just for example, you know, um, just this small project is about, I think I estimated $36 extra a year on a $200,000 house for a property owner in Wabashon. That's a one or 1.2 million dollar project. Um, and no matter what we do, it's gonna require a public hearing and I was talking to Mike Buboni and his experiences. Certainly if we do a new building, um, 5% of the voting population can sign a petition to have it go to referendum. So I think it's a likely outcome if we go a new combined building that that would go to referendum. And I think if it's a smaller, you know, I do, you know, cheaper, it could still go to referendum or not, just depending on how the public perceives that. So, um, that's information to keep in mind that, uh, a new combined building would, would go to referendum. And, um, I guess, I think, um, are we talking about at the same site or it's also been mentioned the Highway 60 site? So we're building a new combined building, is it going and are we tearing down what's there or are we moving it?
Well, I wondered about that too. You'll notice in the, you'll notice in the memo from the architect, there are some, some considerations related to setback and related to the stormwater management. So I think I, I would, you know, I, I don't know why it would, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a problem in my mind to open up the, the conversation about site, about best site. Especially as it relates to, you know, the, the movement of vehicles, emergency vehicles. I mean, if, if, if that situation can be improved um, by re-siting those facilities, those facilities are sited in a, in a place that's also beneficial for commercial use. So I don't think that should be off the table.
But I don't know, I think to properly analyze it, as I've seen other communities do it, it is a feasibility study and that is gonna be additional cost to do a feasibility study on it. And, and the process we went through this one was kind of pitching general ideas and then the architect brought us back a feasibility study. Tony, remind me, how much was this study that we just have in front of us?
Um, I'm thinking it was 6,500 bucks, but I'm not sure.
So. To six or six. Six.
And it seems like ICS that we just talked to could do it for us or, but if you just want a cost per square foot, I mean, I guess we could do a back of the napkin figure and then bring that back before paying a feasibility analysis, but um.
Well, and I think the work group can probably wrestle with that a little bit too, because I, I think what I hear Darren saying is, is this really worth it? You know, we're gonna get an improved facility, but it's a lot of money. So I think if you come up with that other, I'm, I, I, it's low in my mind. When I think about interior renovation of, of structures, I mean, those, even those renovation costs, 65 to 85, that seems low to me, especially given inflation. But the total, of course, is a big number, but it's a big facility, you know, so I, I will be surprised if it's that cost.
Is there any interest in forming a group?
I see nodding.
Yeah, I, I think there, I think that's a, a good idea. Um, I'd volunteer, um, Darren, Tony, Tim, and, uh.
I think law enforcement should be involved in that too.
And law enforcement. And law enforcement, right?
In law enforcement, yeah, so and Joe.
Are we talking about city hall moving there?
I I think we should.
I don't think it would hurt. I mean, city hall is by far the simplest of of users. I mean, that's just basics office for footage, so that's an easy one. But it might might be nice for city hall to be at the table to hear the hear the conversation.
Yeah, okay. Well, um. I think others have a clearer sense of what the group is going to do than than I do, but I'm just. I'm a bit overwhelmed by the thought of building a new building. I don't think we mentioned that in the.
In your hiring process?
Recurbin process, but um I think we definitely can talk about it and probably we need to look at the two options that makes sense, so.
I have a feeling that if we were to approve this I C S study in twenty twenty-two, we'd be in this, we'd be moving in this direction because.
Yeah.
We have disparate, we have disparate aging facilities, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, hopefully. And you know, like in the past, this has kind of gotten brought up and it's went from five hundred thousand to four million and then everybody's like, oh, we doing that? And that's it. Then that's where we sit until we bring it up again, but hopefully we can. Come up with something other than that and get something done.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's like when your kitchen's falling apart, nobody wants to spend the money it it takes to redo a kitchen, but eventually when things fall apart, you have to do it, so. Um, you know, that price tag seems big. But if it's planned for and and there's, you know, there's a a responsible financing plan. You know, we can't, we just can't look a blind eye toward facilities for our EMS that don't serve the public anymore. And don't meet health and safety standards. I mean, that's not responsible, so. Yeah, great. I think it's good to have the the bigger picture and this, I don't think this report from the architect was without value. I think it's what it does show is, okay, that doesn't work for us. It doesn't quite work for us is what I hear Tim saying, and it gives some cost estimates that are probably useful. Um, and some considerations that are now on the page for those sites, so still has value. All right, so we. Aside from the um commitment of those members to a working group, we don't really have additional um action on this item. At this point, it sounds like. All right, thanks for that discussion. Uh so general business four is the approval of the work order for engineering services on the twenty twenty-three downtown planning and reconstruction. We have Brian who's been waiting, waiting patiently with us to uh walk us through this.
Good evening.
Hi, Brian.
So, sorry, I gotta click to the right thing here. You finished that up quicker than I thought. Um, so in your packet is a is a work order uh that represents uh the preliminary planning and public involvement for the downtown reconstruction project. Um, if you recall at your last meeting, we talked about um the idea of incorporating some additional planning items. Into the planning and public involvement for the project. Um, so for reference, the. There's a map at the end of the work order that identifies the the downtown reconstruction project, which which will be the focus of the planning. And public involvement and preliminary engineering for the project. So that's the reconstruction of Pembroke Avenue from. Uh fifth, fourth, fifth Grant Boulevard up to Main Street, Main Street from Pembroke. Uh through the downtown area over to Bridge uh Avenue and then Bridge Avenue from Main Street back down to Fourth Grant Boulevard. Um, so I'll walk you through the uh the work order and the tasks that are in there and spend a little time talking about those. Optional planning items that you asked us to look at, including and giving you costs for so you could decide what you wanted to include. Uh in the planning and public involvement. So if you look at page, pages one and two of the work order, just the legal. Uh things referencing the agreement we have with the city, but exhibit A is the scope of work. Uh that we would do if you chose to proceed with the work order. Um task one is the preliminary planning and public involvement. Uh preliminary planning again would focus on that downtown reconstruction project, so we'd be doing. A planning effort to look at layouts for that project, so we'd be looking at street. And lane widths, parking, uh bicycle and ped facilities, uh the curb bump outs at intersections to facilitate. Uh safer pedestrian crossing, street lighting, and then looking at options for streetscaping and landscaping. So as a part of that planning process, we developed some typical sections and some alternative layouts. Uh we develop a screening process to evaluate the layouts and put together a matrix to help you decide. Which alternatives best meet the purpose of the project and then we'd select a um. A recommended alternative and develop a planning level layout for that uh particular project. Um, and then we would use that layout as a part of the feasibility report where we would be doing a little bit of preliminary engineering to develop. Uh cost estimates uh for the project moving forward. We already have planning level estimates for the project, but we need to do some preliminary engineering to zero in on those costs. And uh develop preliminary assessments as a part of the preliminary engineering and feasibility report task. So as a part of that planning process, um we did uh take your input at the last meeting about the additional planning tasks. And what you might want to include. And so starting on page three of that work order, we've got those broken down. Um, so the first optional plat uh task would be looking at wayfinding signage and community entrance signs. And so as a part of that task, we would develop. Um, some uh basically preliminary drawings uh for and options for what the wayfinding signage might look like. And what the community entrance signs might look like. We'd look at um identifying civic destinations and points and travel routes. Um, in cooperation with you to identify where you want uh the wayfinding signage to to guide people to. And basically develop a map and a design for that wayfinding signage. Um as well as the community entrance signs that you might want to include to replace the ones that exist and maybe add some additional ones if that's what you want to do. Um, item B is coordination of that downtown aesthetic, so we'll be developing kind of a streetscaping. And hardscaping uh plan for an aesthetic for the downtown area as a part of the uh the project corridor. Um, but as a part of that, um we discussed the idea of, you know, if you wanted to continue that aesthetic in future projects downtown. What area would that apply to and where would those boundaries be um so that you can continue that aesthetic? Uh in future projects downtown, whether that be down towards Beach Avenue or just extending uh kind of the. The center area in between the project area. Um, C, I guess I named that the under the bridge conceptual planning and design and that's related to the. Um area um under the bridge um along Walnut Avenue um where Lawrence Boulevard connects. Kind of west of the condo area. It's that last area under the bridge that is currently not a parking area, um. And so we do some planning and options for looking at that, either developing additional public parking there. Or potentially developing that into um a more usable open space. Uh park and trail type area, um public space with access to the river. Um, and then we also included the idea of, you know, that if you did develop that it is a parking area, you discussed E V charging stations earlier in the meeting. Uh looking at whether that would be a likely place to install those if you chose to pursue that um down the road. Item D is looking at um providing a connection to beach parks, so I'd be looking at, um you know, how do you? We'll look at this partly with the wayfinding signage, but just, you know, when you've got people downtown, just how do you draw people towards beach park? And and make them aware that, you know, if you continue down Main Street, there's a destination down there and that. Could come in the form of of wayfinding signage, potential trail connections, sidewalk connections. Um continuing some of that um aesthetic um design down Main Street. Towards beach park. And then item E looks at trail connections along the river. Um, and that's really looking at studying uh how you could better provide um bike and pedestrian facilities. Uh basically between where the the dedicated trail facility ends. Um on Main Street near Slippery's and you're kind of dumping people off onto Lawrence Boulevard and they're they're basically utilizing the street. Uh all the way towards the condos where the trail picks up again and heads past the Eagle Center and then you're putting people back onto Lawrence Boulevard. So really kind of following that uh Mississippi Trail designated route uh that exists as a designation, but there really aren't. Facilities with that whole route, so looking at filling those gaps uh west of um the condos in the Eagle Center. That trail gap and then filling it east along Lawrence Boulevard, uh extending along Washington Avenue. And basically trying to get folks down to Hiawatha Drive where you've got sidewalk and then trail heading out south of town towards the school again. And then item F would look at as a part of the downtown planning. Uh if you wanted to pursue downtown restrooms, where where would you likely, where where were good spots to put that? Um, and what would those look like? Um and what would the estimated cost be for those things? And then lastly, uh one item was the idea of doing a curb bump out demonstration, so. Um, we know that um well, we will be looking at curb bump outs as a part of the the conceptual layouts for the downtown area. We know that curb bump outs have. Um significant safety benefits for pedestrian crossings. You have a significant number of pedestrians utilizing the downtown area. Um, and uh we can design those and include those, but this is the idea of. Um doing a demonstration where you would put out some cones or some paint or some delineators. If in one intersection or more intersections to give people an idea of what it would look like and to confirm, you know, that vehicles can. Still make the turns and trucks can still make the turns and those types of things. So those are the optional items and and when we get down to the to the cost, there are some, there's a menu. Uh of costs for that that you could uh include, uh choose to include or not to include. So that's the preliminary planning item. Then we get to the public involvement. Public involvement would be kind of a typical um. Infrastructure project, public involvement, uh maybe a little more involved because we are dealing with the downtown areas and and the impacts that it would have. Construction of the project would have to the the businesses and the property owners. And so we've identified some potential stakeholders that we'd be very deliberate about. Involving in the public involvement process. Um involving them either in focus groups or individual meetings or certainly in the public open houses. Uh we've got a uh public open houses identified uh for the project, um. Uh three different public open houses that we would look at. Um prior, at the beginning of the process, we would develop a a written public involvement plan to lay out how this would all work and what the schedule would be. And go over that with staff and present that to council. Uh the public involvement process would include, you know, direct mailings to project stakeholders, residents, business owners, as well as uh. Um email blasts and the opportunity to sign up for email updates through the website, which would be a part of the online engagement process. Developing a project website um that would include. Um, the various uh concepts and alternatives, project schedule, um. Basically, it'd be the the hub for project information that people could go to to learn about the project. And then we've also included in here um uh another online engagement tool. We call it input ID and it's basically a. A web-based uh um input system, so it's a like a Google Maps type based web web system where we. Uh identify the project area and allow people to provide comments uh on the project um in a web-based format. We find it to be pretty effective um for gathering comments for projects like this. Um, task two is then the preliminary engineering and feasibility report, which is basically uh focused on the project itself and it's developing. Uh those detailed preliminary engineering layouts and cost estimates based on the preferred alternative that's selected through the preliminary planning. And public involvement process, developing the feasibility report, which is required for. Um statutory requirements for special assessments. And then task three is a kind of a standalone task. In order to do all that preliminary engineering, we need to do topographic survey and. Uh to determine the elevations in the corridor and establish right away and property lines and those types of things, so that's task three. Get down to compensation, task one, the basic preliminary planning and public involvement that just involves the project area. Would be forty-five thousand three hundred. And then you've got items A through G, which are the op- optional planning additions. If you chose uh to include any of those items in this. Process, um those would be the additional costs added on to task one to include those items and the scope of work that was identified. In each of those individual items. And then you've got the preliminary engineering and feasibility report in task two there for a hundred and thirty-one thousand. The topographic and boundary survey for forty-two five. And then I I put totals here if you chose to do no optional tasks and then I put a total for if you wanted to do all of the optional tasks. And then if you chose to do some of them, it would be somewhere in between. Um, I should note that the task two, that one thirty-one, two fifty, does include about forty, just under forty-nine thousand dollars. In work that we've already done and we've already invoiced to the city for all of the preliminary estimates that we've done, the preliminary layouts. That we did for the purpose of applying for the local road improvement program funding for the purpose of having those discussions with the county about their cost. Participation in the project. And then lastly, I would just say uh the total of this preliminary planning um is included in the total project cost that's been estimated to date. Which in twenty nineteen dollars was five point seven million dollars and then Mike. Bubani, for the purpose of your capital finance plan, has projected some inflation and that's at six point three million dollars and that's the cost that was used. In twenty twenty-three dollars in your capital finance plan and what you've used to to determine uh the how you would finance the project. So that was a lot. I rattled off a lot of information. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Brian, the total that's included in the C I P plan is with no optional tasks?
Yeah, it it well, it's interesting because at planning level estimates, the optional tasks are somewhere in the neighborhood of. Fifty thousand dollars, I think, if I added those up right if I remember right. I I would say that that probably the the level of accuracy of that preliminary estimate, the five point seven, the six point three with inflation. Technically, it's not in there, but from the standpoint of accuracy, it. It probably is if you wanted to do it. It's it's in the margin of error of that estimate, I would say.
Okay.
But no, we didn't specifically include any of that um specifically in those estimates.
Okay. So we need to be giving you guidance based on a discussion and then a, you know, then a motion that effect of the menu items. That we would like to see in addition to the. Uh preliminary plan and is there anything else you want us to be discussing so we can stay on task? Was that the gist of our needed action?
No, all I would say is that if you have um. There will be a point when we, when we will not be able to add any of these additional tax, we look tasks who will have gone too far to go back and pick them up. Um, but I would say we wouldn't want to, if you have a lot of uncertainty about what you want to include or not. Um, we really don't want to delay because of the public involvement and planning process. It's a large project. It's going to affect the downtown businesses. We really don't want to delay uh getting into that planning and public involvement process for too long. So if you were going to. Take a couple of extra council meetings to decide on these items, I would say. Get us going on the base tasks, one, two and three, without the options. And if you wanted to decide at a later date. Um, to add on some of these items that you aren't sure about yet, I would encourage you to do that.
Before, you know, by the end of our April meeting at the latest, sounds like.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And are there any?
I would just add that.
Go ahead.
Um, Tony and I had some and with Brian had some discussion, you know, what is the purpose of the curb bump out demonstration project? That was something discussed by the Bike Walk Advocates Group. And if we think that people are comfortable with curb bump outs, have seen them, used them. You know, we discussed that a demonstration project is not necessary. Um, we gathered. Uh feedback from Craig, he thought potentially it would be necessary. For me, that's one item that I feel that there's been enough. Curb bump outs done and you can see them, um. Uh Craig had some concerns maybe about um modeling of the software, but it's something that I would be comfortable removing. And because I don't, I don't think it's going to be a huge issue, but.
I don't have a problem with the bump outs as far as pedestrian safety is, that's. I was concerned about um service trucks, which include tractor trailers and. Single unit vehicles being able to negotiate those turns in there. Um, and that's a relatively small area, so it's not that big a deal, but I just think uh. Seen some projects where the turning radius wasn't exactly what it should have been and the first thing you get is. Seen some projects where the turning radius wasn't exactly what it should have been, and the first thing you get is broken. Radio where the trucks are running over them. So I just wanted to avoid that.
I think I think we can handle that in the design process, Craig. We we've designed enough of these in this type of situation where I'm confident. We can lay them out to allow for the larger vehicles to navigate the turns, but. So I'm not too worried about that. Curb bump outs are becoming almost a standard installation in pedestrian heavy environments now. They were, you know, ten fifteen years ago, they were kind of a new thing that communities are getting used to and. Designers are getting used to, but they're pretty standard these days.
Tony's snowplow drivers aren't going to be used to them.
Yep, it's always a little something new, but. So they have steering wheels on those snowplows, you know. Don't, don't hit me later, Tony.
I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but I think from my involvement with the statewide health improvement partnership that. Even the planning related to trail connections along the river might be a qualifying. Expense that we could write a grant for and with Bolton and Mike doing it. I don't know if you have any experience with that, Brian, and other communities that are trying to improve. Trail connections.
Yeah, we've we actually got City of Plainview did a pedestrian and sidewalk plan last year and they got ship funding. For that particular project. So yeah, they are. That type of planning for trail connection sidewalks is an eligible expense. And I'm Carolina and I've talked about that. For some other trail planning in town as well.
We could, we could probably, Ryan, incorporate. I think yours is going to be more extensive, but the trail connections along the river can just be incorporated in the park strategic plan. Leaving us with just, you know. A through D.
Yep, we definitely could. Because it is kind of a outside of downtown area and and, you know, if we're going to do, yeah, it's really about. What you might want to include in the public involvement and and if we're doing that planning separately, you know, we can always include. Bring that into the public involvement plan and do this planning as a part of that effort instead. So, yeah.
Anybody else have any suggestions or questions?
It sounded to me like at your last meeting that items A, A, item A was pretty important. That item B seemed to make some sense. That item C was something that keeps coming up over and over again. For sure. I don't know if that fits with. What you're thinking or not, but.
Yeah, I thought that too. I I didn't expect maybe to see the aesthetic. Coordination described that way. I'm just wondering, so what we're really identifying is an aesthetic beyond the slated. Twenty twenty three street project, so. Understanding where if if further streetscape design occurred, what that. Aesthetic would be to be in keeping with the broader plan.
Yep, where you would want those limits to be and then developing some. You know, some. Basically documentation on, you know, what you would do and where so that in the future that's documented and you when you decide to do a project. Somewhere else you've got, you can pick that up and say, yeah, look, we already, we had public input on this. Now, we had basically adopted this as our as our plan and you can just execute it in the future and you're not back to the drawing board deciding on, you know what? Where where do we want the decorative street lighting to stop? And where do we want to continue it on? Or, you know, where do we want to continue on with, you know? The the landscaping that you decided to do or the streetscaping that you decided to do. So. Kind of establishing that so you can basically just execute those decisions later on down the road.
I'd like to see. Besides wayfinding signs, those are important too, but also just to have streetscape. That is consistent. Design that would lead people from, they're still going to come off the bridge and they're still going to be the same grade as. As a. Grand Boulevard. So when they come to that point. We want to come up with a streetscape that will invite them to turn and go to the downtown. So I think that especially if we've got eighty thousand visitors or more going to the NEC. That would be nice that we have a design that kind of encourages them. This is the way to the downtown besides the signs.
The only reason we separated out that item D connection to beach park is because you are kind of shifting out of downtown through a residential area and then back to the park. So it feels like that's a little bit different kind of connection than just, you know, establishing, you know, what the limits of the downtown area are. So felt like a little bit of a different, different animal.
Do we want to, you know, give that signal? About the preliminary planning, you know, giving that the go ahead and and any of these, you know, verifying that what what Brian understood from our last meeting is correct that. At least these first three wayfinding coordination of aesthetic and under the bridge. Are likely to be priorities.
Yeah, I would think that we'd want to get them started. We're going to be. We don't have a whole lot of time before twenty twenty three if we're going to get funding for that. So I think we should get started.
And as I said.
I would just be, I mean, I just want to say we're kind of doing it there. So there are some cost savings. I would just say, you know, throw in D. But I I think A through D is. Cause like I said, brand new to Wabashah, the the image is fresh in my mind. It wasn't. Obvious that there was beach park. If you're brand new and you're just walking around town. I made it. You know, I can remember making it to the restaurants, but then you kind of stop once you get to the bridge and Heritage Park. You don't think there's something, another amenity. Further on, so.
As I walked around the downtown. People stopped me all the time and the first question that comes out of their mouth is where is slippery's? Just right on the way to beach park. So I think there's there's a value in that.
I should say too, that, you know, any of these, all of these items, if we looked at any of these items individually and and wanted to look at it. In a planning and public involvement process individually, it would cost more than this. So there is some cost savings in combining all these together in one planning and public involvement. Process. So if there's any of these that you feel are. Are things that you would even want to do in the in the future, you're going to you're going to spend less doing it through this process than you would individually.
Yeah, I'm I'm inclined to to see all of them. Because we are, everyone's going to be together, so why not just try to get them all done at once?
Yeah, I I guess I am too, except I don't feel super strongly about bump outs just because, you know, I've seen the communities that have added them and. They have buses and they have trucks and, you know, presumably there would be learning on. The engineering side of things if they were, you know, running into consistent issues. So that one is the. Least critical for me, although I see its value and I think there too, we had some discussion about. Funding that type of work. As I recall, Caroline and Tony helped me out. That was actually a MIND that demonstration, so we could get a MIND that demonstration funded. It wasn't funding for. Our city engineers to do that work.
I would say that item is like, if you look at that, the description of that task, you know, there's a lot of stuff in that ten thousand dollars. You know, Tony would tell you too, if if your only goal was to, you know, put it out there for a couple of weekends to make sure vehicles, you know, can get around the corner. Well, Tony can probably buy all of the equipment and materials necessary to do that and install it, you know, get help them a little bit with the layout and the dimensions, but. You're not going to spend anywhere near ten thousand dollars if that's what you do. This is really a. For that full scope and that curb bump out where we're having our staff do the work, we're doing. You know, some surveys or getting some drone video of it. We're doing some interviews. We're putting a report together and all that kind of stuff. So. If if really all you wanted to do with that is put out some cones and some striping or some paint and have. Cars and trucks drive around it for a couple of weekends. That's something completely less than that, so.
I think that was even what we thought when we heard from the MIND doc guy, Tony, wasn't it? Like this is, like this doesn't need to be this intensive. We we can probably learn a lot from a very. Low tech, you know. Installation, whatever. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, so.
Paperwork.
Yep, yep, exactly. So I'm hearing good support for for everything with maybe that curb bump out being the exception because we can work through that in other ways. Is that about right?
Agree. Take the low, low. The low valve, the low, the easy one for the curb bump, but we don't need to have drones flying around. We're going to just put out some cones.
You'll just create a stir here, Brian. You'll just create a stir.
There's drones and eagles. You won't know the difference.
Yes, I've been informed by the Eagle Center how little eagles enjoy drones, which I hadn't really thought about, but it makes a lot of sense that they wouldn't like that very much. All right, so do anybody want to make a motion to that effect that we would have this as outlined through item F?
I'll make that motion.
Great, thanks, Craig. Have a second?
One second.
Thanks, thanks, John. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll vote if not.
I just like A, B, C only.
Jeff likes A, B, and C the most. All right, well, we can vote. Certainly that, we can always return to that as a as a different motion if this fails. Okay, so we'll take a roll. Is Jess going to do that for us? Walrick?
Yes.
Woodley? Woodley?
Yes, the addition of D, E, and F in the grand scheme of the project is not. That absorbent of a cost for me, so I'm against.
Stella?
No.
Falcon?
Yes.
Friedmeyer?
Yes.
And I believe Dean was bumped off the.
I'm on, yes.
Okay, Moyer?
Yes.
Okay. Durant? Yes. Sorry, Dean, I didn't notice you dropped off. Did you have anything else you wanted to add? Motion prevails.
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thanks, Brian. We appreciate your time and thought on this. We. We enjoy having you here, but I'm sure you have important stuff you've got to get done too.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
All right, so. Hiring a full time ambulance director, we have a nice outline of that process. Caroline, anything or or anyone from the task force who I really appreciate that effort? Anybody want to tee this up for us?
Yeah, can I? I see, this is a thought that's been running through my mind. We had the discussion on the fire. Fire barn and the ambulance barn that. I think as the ambulance commission looked at the possibility, what? Or the feasibility of hiring contract out the ambulance services. I know that some of the cities around here do do that. And I don't know how feasible that is.
I will say that I had put on the table for the ambulance task force to consider looking at kind of discussions with Lake City. And that could be contracting with them. But that was not met with a positive reception. I think what was decided is let's hire the ambulance director. And at that point, he might, he or she might engage with Lake City on just. Collaboration perhaps. Shared resources, but not that. We would contract it out. So the question was not asked directly of Lake City. So.
Yeah, Craig, I guess from my experience, I don't think we want to get to that point yet. And I just know that there's a lot of negative sides of that and Plainview is probably proof and point on that. So I think we would have to do our very due diligence of if that's truly the way we want. Because then all of a sudden you start losing control and then they get to do whatever they kind of want and stuff. So to me, that's like a. Last resort type of activity. My opinion would be to much more improve upon what we have and we have great staff and. You know, great collaboration with other communities like City and others that we deal with. So I think to me that would be a last resort.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's been given some thought so we can. We can say we looked at it.
I mean, we did talk about it on the task force. I don't know if we went much further beyond that besides doing a cost analysis of, you know. You know, we may save money in the long run, but I think the overall just kind of response and the quality of care and the. Amount of care and and stuff like that might diminish, which I don't think the city of Wabashah wants. So. There's always a little trade off when you start talking about that stuff.
Has Plainview formally, I mean, we've heard the stories and, you know, the news reports and things like that. Has Plainview formally analyzed that with regards to actual service? The community gets for that contract?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, we would have to ask Plainview if they truly have looked at. You know, what Mayo ambulance offers and and so on. I mean, I I know originally it was they would have ALS. Well, they don't have that anymore. So it's like BLS. So it's much more down to the realm of where we're at and. You know, I think they have issues with response time. I know LG still covers area every once in a while because Mayo ambulance is out of the area. So I think there's a lot of logistics. My opinion would be to. Better collaborate with, you know, Lake City, not necessarily taking calls, but how can we? Utilize resources better, either through training, through, you know, taking transfers out of Saint Elizabeth and stuff like that. I think there's a lot we can learn and and do that route, but. I just, I I would really hesitate to go to a contract type of scenario.
Okay, well, we have a very clear action required of us or requested of us, but I don't want to diminish the opportunity for everybody who's participated to give. You know, their summary thoughts or Caroline, if you have anything else you want us to consider before somebody makes a motion.
Well, I just, I think we we did discuss that it is, it is a tough hiring environment so that. If. If we did not find the right ambulance director candidate, that we would revisit option B, which is just a part time director. But there were several dissenting members, so we did not reach consensus, but. Councilmember Walrick and councilmember Friedmeyer and I felt that some of the policy changes. Were in response to some of some of the survey comments, but I think I summarized in the staff memo what I see as. You know, two things that are true and what the challenges are.
Sure. Jeff, any, I think, was Jeff? Yeah, Jeff was on. Anything Jeff or John that you'd like to add? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion.
I'll just say, I I think it was a really thorough process. I think that the 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 survey that was taken by past and present. Service members was. Difficult. And it was difficult to review and analyze. And I think that the group as a group. Came up with. Good. Good ways to to address those concerns that were in that that task, that survey. I think when, you know, the items that we approved and that we will be approving here later. With respect to the the ambulance commission as well as the employee policies. Really helped to set that, set the service up for more success and for leadership to have that opportunity to be successful. And I think, you know, to Craig's question with with respect to. Contracting out for an. Third party service or whatever, be it Mayo or or Gunderson. We're not in that position and we've kind of geographically, we're kind of in a difficult position as well with that. Lake City is not prepared to do it at all. They're just not at that level. And I know it's all anecdotal, but you know, the 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 stuff that Lake City or Plainview is going through with respect to. Coverage and and trucks being in town or not in town or passage, passing each other. You know, in the dark of the night, taking a call and someone trying to, the truck trying to come back and cover. Is is just not what. I think our community is expecting, certainly because we have a hospital here in town. We spent time with Gunderson. Monica Walters was also on the call. She's on the ambulance commission and she had good input with respect to representing Gunderson. And, you know, we did not reach consensus. But I do feel that the the prevailing vote. Being one of those people that voted for, I'll give that, so I'm biased, but. I do think it's the right. Right direction, the right, the right thing to do for the service.
All right, anything further? Otherwise, we could entertain a motion to hire a full time ambulance director.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John. Do we have a second? Thank you, Brian. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. Uh, Woodley?
Uh, Woodley?
Yes.
Walrick?
Yes.
Uh, Falcon?
Yes.
Friedmeier?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Sulla?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So now, um, we have before us the option to determine if council desires to engage in a strategic planning process. There's no rush on this, but I think Caroline and I, and I think Tim mentioned this early in our term as well. I think we would work very well, uh, as colleagues on council to develop a plan. I think this group would be more than capable of developing a really solid plan that could be a touch point for our current, you know, uh, serving members of council as well as future people who are interested in running, uh, or future ser-, you know, future serving council. Um, so we've been talking about it a little bit. Caroline and I had lunch with Tony Smith. You, many of you probably know Tony. I got to know her when I served with her on the Eagle Center board. She's been a Wabashaw resident for a long time, but she was, uh, in a professional role conducting strategic planning for counties throughout the state of Minnesota for a large part of her career. Um, and she has done this, um, you know, for government entities before. She also did this, I know for the board, for the Eagle Center board. I know, um, I don't think that he would mind if I said this, um, Barry Hill is on that, was on that board with me and said, you know, is this going to be a waste of time? You know, he knows that I came from an organization where we did a lot of this kind of work. And I said, I doubted it. You know, I've never been a part of a strategic planning process that if it was handled with, you know, any level of care and the people there were committed, doesn't reward the organization. Um, and he said, well, Tony's doing it. And I said, well, it'll probably be great. And he followed up that it was, it was really good and very participatory. So we have that option in front of us. Tony has been willing to, um, kind of tee up a model that she described for Caroline and I, which would be a either half or full day. We think maybe eight to two would be the, the longest that's feasible, depending on people's work schedules. Um, she'd be willing to do that work pro bono. Um, if we think this work sounds good, but we don't want to do it with a local resident for some reason, or we wanted to look into paying for this kind of a service. Um, Caroline has outlined that we could, we could work on this now. We could also think about it in 2023 after elections have occurred. Some of us are at the end of our terms. Um, but one thing that would benefit us in terms of budget season is having, um, some of the strategy outlined so that we know what we're trying to fund and we know what our goals are. Um, so if we want to work on it now, uh, rather than delaying until, uh, other members of, of council have been elected, um, the possible target date would be, you know, as early as April or May in advance of the budget. Um, so let's give some direction to staff about what we think would be valuable if we want to go with this pro bono option and get on, kind of get on Tony's calendar. She is not professionally doing this work anymore. She is, she has shut down her consulting, but she has done this a couple of times pro bono and would be willing to do that for us. Any thoughts about the value of this or any of the specifics mentioned?
Uh, so I worked with Tony, uh, in the county for a, a number of years. She's an excellent person. She'd be a really good moderator for this. So I, I think we should go ahead with this.
Tim, were you going to say something too?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with Craig. Um, my only question is, is how does this intertwine with the comp plan? Um, I don't want to have 16 different strategic type of documents out there. Is it going to be kind of intertwined? Is it going to be in addition to it? I mean, I think it's, it's good to really look at the strategic side of things, but I'm just, I don't want to have all of a sudden now we're referencing three different documents and, and slightly different in all three avenues, but, um, I'm more than willing to sit in on this as well.
It's a good point. Yeah, I, I am too. And that was a question I had, and I, I wondered if the strategic plan was, was how to, how to best execute the comp plan.
That's my thinking. Obviously the strategic plan is, is a many years, you know, uh, forecast and it's in, in some areas more specific than other areas. It's somewhat generic in some areas. Um, you know, when I think about like the call I'm going to be on tomorrow, where we're talking about our strategies. I would love as a mayor and I would love for any future mayor to be able to say council strategic plan includes these three, four or five items. And this is what we're doing to get, to get there. Um, and we don't, we don't have a document like that that we're currently working with. Obviously the, the comp plan's a nice touchstone, but it's not a plan.
You know, and I'll, Like the comp plan calls for like constructing an indoor swimming pool in Wabashaw. Um, it also called for the bike trail connection between Wabashaw and Kellogg. It, you know, analyzes streets. It's a very, it's a very good 10-year document, but I was like, so then I'm reading it. I'm like, does everyone want me working on a swimming pool? I mean, yeah, we'd all love a swimming pool, but I never really heard, oh, that's our priority, you know? So, um, there's a lot of goals in the comp plan and this would narrow it down to what are the, the things we want to prioritize for me as your city administrator? And then as council, what are we going to focus on?
You know, and, and that being said, we just adopted the, the strategic plan for, uh, Port Authority that mirror, you know, works off of the comp plan and our part in that. So there you go.
Any other thoughts? Is something we want to pursue yet this year? Well, people are, I can't remember where everybody's terms are. Mine ends this year. Um, I suppose Tim and I are both in the same term. Dean, you too. Yep. And, yeah.
Yep.
So I'd love to do it. I'm, I'm going to be, this is a good group, a good group with a lot of experience. I think this group would bring a lot of value to the process and whether this is something that comes at the, the end of somebody's tenure or this is, they continue to serve. This is just a good group with a lot of knowledge.
So just go forward with it.
Yeah, let's go for it. Okay. So Tony was very clear. She'd be willing. So it'll just be an issue of when it falls into the calendar events. You know, COVID still concerns me until in terms of people's, um, comfort with participation. But, you know, I think we could think about venues like the library, for instance, versus our council chambers and probably figure something out. So is that enough direction for now for you, Caroline?
Yes. Yeah, I was mainly, do we want to wait till after elections or not? And it sounds like, nope, we want to move forward. So, um, work on it.
All right. This one always feels much more challenging to me because I keep thinking it's going to take a committed group. I don't think it's going to be a ton of work, but they have, they have to have a great knowledge base to work with. Um, and that's the charter commission. So our final item of general business is to, um, remind everybody that the charter commission has to be appointed by a judge, but council can provide the recommendation. Um, uh, we've been indicated we need at least seven members to serve. I think we talked about having a couple more than that. So if people fell away, we would still have our seven. Um, we have had four individuals express a willingness to serve and I really appreciate it for that. Gail Gillespie, um, former mayor Roland Hall, Jeff Sulla and Dean Moyer. And then a couple of other people have been approached, Nan Hyer and Mark Jarstad. They would both bring value and I, I can think of a couple of others too. I, I would love to see, uh, former members of council who know what it's like to work with the charter and understand how it parallels or doesn't our ordinances and, and our practices. Um, so still urge others. Um, but we can't move forward until we have seven volunteers. So, um, Caroline's looking for council to provide feedback on the desired outcome. Uh, we would like to see, and anything further from us, Caroline? Just kind of any urging?
We, I think we did take out a newspaper ad recently. Um, Lisa coordinated that. So we should see that soon.
Great.
I think we just got to get it out there a little bit more. I've been kind of neglected, uh, in doing that. And, uh, the individuals I'm thinking of are all small birds and, uh, uh, I don't want to bother them right now. So, uh, I say, you know, let's continue with this point. Uh, there's, you know, when we get a committee, we get a committee. Um, there's plenty of people out there that will do it. It's just a matter of contacting them and, and, uh, you know, following them through. And I, I, like I said, I've been sick and stuff, so I neglected on my end. So.
All right. So we're, we're actually making, we're not just on track. I'd say we're making progress. We're adding names to this list and I'm sure those folks are thinking about others that could serve as well. Okay. So our final item is to accept, um, by council.
Tenet.
Oh, Tenet, I knew I was going to do that. Sorry, Tim. Those policies that you worked hard on, please, um, highlight what you'd like us to know.
Uh, yeah. And this will be really quick since this was a consented item. Uh, we discussed it again at our ambulance meeting yesterday or last evening. And I just have two minor, minor changes. Um, I don't know if you want me just to express them and then Caroline, I can send them to you. Um, but if that works well for everybody, but, um, the one item was there's a all within the unbecoming conduct section, professional conduct, um, 20.03. Um, it talks about no personnel shall refuse any call. And I just want to add the word any 911 call in there, um, because we do refuse transfers. So, um, I think we just need to clarify that. Um, or if we want to say nine, 911 excluding transfers, whatever. Um, that's a minor, to me, minor change, um, that addition on that. And then under, uh, corporate credit card policy, uh, 2200, um, there's a line in there. It says Wabashaw ambulance personnel are able to charge as appropriate at the following locations. And I just want to get rid of the locations because they change. And I just want to say as appropriate, uh, uh, if, oh, sorry, I want to say as appropriate at all locations, Wabashaw ambulance has a charge account with. So there's a number one, there's a number of stores on that list that are on this. So I don't, we'll just make it generic and just wipe the stores out. And if we have a, a charge account there, we can, uh, charge, personnel can charge for that. So very minor on that. Otherwise staff was, uh, appreciative of it and, um, and they had input on all of this and reviewed it. So I think we're comfortable with those two changes as far as we're concerned.
Okay, Tim, that's, anybody have any questions for Tim? Otherwise we could entertain a motion to approve the policy with personnel shall not refuse 911 calls and the corporate credit card, uh, as appropriate at locations where the ambulance service has a charge account.
I'll make motion for those, uh, two changes.
Thank you, Dean.
A second.
Thank you, John. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. We'll take a roll vote.
Um, Sulla?
Yes.
Uh, Friedmeier?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Falcon?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Walrick?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes. All right. Squeezing just a little announcement in here before we accept the donations. Caroline chatted about, uh, change in our permanent meeting time to 6:00 PM. Can we just throw that out there for a brief discussion? Is that even, is that impossible for anybody?
I'm just so tired right now.
We all lose our, our steam. I'm watching the clock as, as soon as I started hearing my kids brush their teeth and I'm like, oh, we're all done.
I'd prefer 6:00 PM as well.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think a lot of our commissions have either gone to earlier. Um, so I think it's in, you know, it's a good recommendation.
Yeah, that's fine.
So it doesn't sound like it wouldn't work for anybody. We want to adopt that for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Super. Great. That worked well. Thanks for reminding us of that, Caroline. And now the donations. Uh, so we have a resolution before us to accept the donations to the library. Uh, $50 from an anonymous donor, $20 by Linda and Jerry Bremer in memory of Mary, Mary Lou Schwelliler. $50 by Bev and Bruce Hall in memory of Mary Lou Schwelliler. Do we have a motion to accept the donations?
Uh, Walrick moves.
Thank you.
Moyer seconds.
Thank you. We have a first from Tim, a second from Dean. Any further discussion or we'll roll call and then entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. Hearing none.
Um, Walrick?
Yes.
Woodley? Friedmeier?
Yes.
Sulla?
Yes.
Um, sorry, Falcon? Moyer?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Any further announcements or we will entertain a motion to adjourn? I really appreciate everybody's investment. I know Caroline and staff have been engaging a lot of members of council and other task forces, and I really appreciate the work that's been done. There's a lot of stuff moving forward that's been kind of on the back burner as we've gotten used to a newest administrator, but we're really cruising on stuff. Thank you.
Can I just ask?
Yes, John.
Can I just ask Caroline and Craig if they'd stand for just a, I promised Caroline two minutes.
Yes.
She's going to be rubbing her eyes until you.
Otherwise, uh, Walrick moves to adjourn.
Thanks, Tim. All right. I think John got the first second. Uh, no further discussion. We'll, uh, take a roll vote and everybody have a, please have a great evening.
Um, Sulla?
Yes.
Friedmeier?
Yes.
Uh, Falcon?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Woodley?
Yes.
Walrick?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Night.
Good night, everyone.